Board of Supervisors meeting, please stand for the pledge. Mr. McPhillips, please lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And please remain standing for a moment of silence for those serving our country, both at home and abroad. Thank you. Okay. Lot of firefighters in the room tonight. Okay, first up is announcements. Ms. Frescatore?
Good evening, fellow board members, ladies and gentlemen. Have some announcements for, on behalf of the Parks and Rec Department. We have the Rubber Ducky Regatta coming up, and all these kids in the room, they would love that event. The tickets are on sale now for the event on May 20th. Tickets are available online at Citadel, the library township building or Parks and Rec office, $5 a duck or five ducks for 20. So you put the little duckies in the stream and they go down, whoever wants, you know, gets their first win, so it's a fun event for families. Discount tickets are available at Parks and Rec. We have movie tickets for $9.50, which is quite a bargain. Ski lift tickets to Ario Pocono Mountains. Tickets are sold Monday through Friday, 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., the Park and Rec office. Bucks County 2018 annual dog licenses are available at the Parks and Rec office. Renewals and new membership to the Bark Park are available for purchase. New members must complete an application, provide proof of rabies inoculation, a current dog license, and a tenant and education class. New member classes will be held March 20th, April 9th, April 25th. Call for times to register. If you'd like to join other volunteers for the community park pickup being held April 1st through May 31st, volunteers are needed to clean up around the schools, parks, highways, train tracks, and other public areas. Great community service to teach your children. One of the things my mom made me do. So it would be a nice, a nice thing to do with your family. Pickup date and time that you choose, register online. Save the date, we're gonna have Warminster Days this year, be held on Saturday, June 9th from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. If you have, if you're interested in having a table, make sure you contact the Park and Rec. Any other questions? All this information is also on our website. That's it, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Frescatore. Mr. Monroe?
None tonight, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. McPhillips?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I want to remind everyone that the next National Prescription Drug Takeback Day is April 28th from 10:00 to 2:00. However, here in Warminster, every day is a takeback day. So if you have any unwanted or unused prescription medications, you can safely dispose them over at the police station. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Hey, thank you. Mr. Crowley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just want to welcome new businesses that have come to town here in the last month. First, the Escape Room at 780 Falcon Circle, Suite 111-116. U.N.O. Wagle Chimney and Masonry, that's at 239 Madison Avenue. Locker Room Storage at 955 Murns Road. Alpha Jewelry at 780 Falcon Circle, Suite 102. And York Road Veterinary Care at 201 York Road. Also, the Economic Development Committee is recognizing for April its business of the month, it's actually the Brad Fox Foundation. In April, on the April 19th meeting, the, the new chair and vice chair of the Economic Development Committee, Joe Warner and Deb Rosica, will present recognition to our April Business of the Month, the Brad Fox Foundation, along with the May and June recipients, which will all be announced at that time. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crowley. I just have a few. Ms. Frescatore mentioned the Rubber Ducky Regatta. I have tickets here, we have a room full of people. Mr. Kennard, I don't think I hit you yet, or...
I have tickets too, don't lose the message.
Chat after the meeting. I also want to remind everyone that March is Colon Cancer Awareness Month, and being a lucky survivor myself, I like to remind everyone to please go and get your screening, or if you're having any symptoms, please don't ignore them. I'm living proof that early detection saves lives, so please, don't forget about that. And one other announcement I had, I want to thank Mr. Kennard from Gilmore Engineering and Judy Goldstein from Boucher &amp; James. There's a small addition project going on over at Gilda's House that's gonna have to happen, and probably over the summer, and these professionals have volunteered their time to do the work on the project pro bono, so I want to thank you guys, I really appreciate it. That's all I have for announcements. I have one announcement that Mr. Bartle's gonna take, it's a bit of a new practice regarding our executive session. We had an executive session prior to tonight's meeting.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The board did meet an executive session, as the chairman has indicated, at 6 o'clock this evening in the room adjacent to this one. The board discussed several matters. They discussed three matters of personnel. They discussed a matter of union negotiation. They also discussed a potential matter of litigation. In addition to that, they discussed two matters of litigation. One of them is the Gallagher matter involving the zoning hearing board of the township, and also involving the Bucks County Court of Common Please. Those are two matters, the parties to those matters before the zoning hearing board are the zoning hearing board, Matthew Gallagher, and the township. The parties before the Court of Common Please are, again, Mr. Gallagher and the township. The Court of Common Please number is number 2016-07259. The Court of Common Please, excuse me, the zoning hearing board matter is indexed under the name of the, of the party. The, there is also a tax appeal matter, in-re appeal of Miller Boys Properties LLC in the Court of Common Please of Bucks County, that's number 2009-12830. The parties to that appeal are the, the Miller Boys Properties LLC, and also the three taxing authorities, the township, the school district, and the county. Each of those matters is a legitimate subject of executive session pursuant to Pennsylvania sunshine law. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bartle. Next up on tonight's agenda is presentations, and we had a late addition to presentations, and I'm gonna ask our good friend from Warminster Shoprite, Joe Cowie, to come up. Joe, I wanted to make a brief presentation. While Joe's on his way up, I want to thank Joe on behalf of the township. He stepped up and took a big sponsorship for Warminster Day, including letting us use his truck and, and the whole night, so we really appreciate it, Joe. You're always the first one to step up, and we're grateful.
No problem. Good reason why I step up.
Say hello?
Joe, let me see. I always step up because Warminster's always been there for me, and we just went through a really bad situation with the store, and the previous store, not last week, the week before March 2nd, where we lost our power in our store, and we were out of, our, our power was out for two and a half days, and we were really struggling to throw a lot of product out, we lost a lot of business, and through that process, Greg, the township was really with us, and somebody really in particular, the chief, we, we needed a generator, and it just, we were having, struggling to get a generator to reopen our store, and chief stepped in and he gave me a couple contacts, and in a situation like that, that's all I needed, was somebody to help lead me in a direction to get me a generator for that store to get it open, and Chief Donnelly, I really appreciate what you did, giving me those, those contacts to help me out. In our business, we're, we're a local business, it's owned and operated by myself and my family, and we don't have a big corporation that provides help in those situations, okay? It's us, and we depend very heavily upon the community and the Warminster Township and people like that to help us out, and this, this township stood behind me and helped me to get where I needed to be, to get that store open, so I get back in business, and that generator was my life support, and I appreciate everything you guys did, and I really appreciate Chief Donnelly back there helping me out as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Joe. Joe, why we have you here? Chief Donnelly's actually looking to raise some money to buy a couple of new Canines that we have in the room. Just thought I'd plant that seed while you're here. Thank you, Joe, thank you very much. Next up on the agenda is, we have a little recognition here for our longtime fireman, Pete Croke. I'm gonna ask Pete to come on up. For those of you that aren't aware, Pete recently retired from the Warminster Fire Department. Come on up here, Pete, everybody can see you. And we, we wanted to, we wanted to recognize Pete for his years of service to Warminster Township. He's a longtime resident and a longtime friend of this township, and you're looking great too, by the way.
Thank you, sir.
I'd just like to read this plaque I want to present to Pete. Warminster Township Board of Supervisors. This plaque is presented to Raymond "Pete" Croke, I never knew that was your real name. Of Warminster Township. In recognition of his over 44 years of service as a firefighter in Warminster Township, his over 30 years of service as an officer with the Warminster Fire Department, most recently serving as deputy chief, and formerly as chief, and his other distinguished contributions to the Warminster community as a public servant, husband, parent, grandparent, and longtime resident. This is well, well deserved. Thank you, Pete.
If I get nervous, I apologize. First of all, I want to thank board members, thank you very much for your honoring me tonight. Also, I want to thank every one of those guys back there. Forty-four years with most of them guys back there, those guys have been my, my brothers forever, and I will truly miss them. I also want to thank my wife and my son, and my other son who's not here tonight, he's actually bowling for me because we're into getting to the nitty-gritty for the championship, so I had to send him there, but I, I thank you very much, and I will truly miss doing this. Thank you.
Thank you, Pete. And please stick around, after we do the combinations for the, for the firemen, we're gonna take a brief recess and we take some pictures with your family. Thank you, Pete, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, I'm gonna ask Chief Supero to come on up. He has some combinations he'd like to give out to the, to our firefighters who we can't say enough about. It's great to have all you guys in the room. I hope nobody has a fire at their house tonight, everyone's here. Use this one more? Yeah, if that's easier for you, whatever's easier for you, Mitch.
Hello, everyone. Board, we recognize our firefighters, sometimes we go unnoticed even within our own ranks, and through all this, we did, wanted to recognize the accomplishments these guys have done, and let the community know that we're out there to help them, and just go over some of the things that have happened over the past few years. We'll start out with the earliest and work up to the latest. First one, while operating on rescue box 922 on February 10th, 2008, members of the Warminster Fire Department worked in adverse weather conditions to extricate a heavily entrapped victim. Due to outstanding efforts from these members, the victim's life was saved without further injury. These actions exemplify the highest commitment and tradition of the fire service. And as I read the names, if you want to come up. I'm already here. That was Battalion Chief Albert Carbone. Not here, but firefighter Steve Young. The next unit accommodation, while was operating on rescue box 922 on February 5th, 2011, members of the Warminster Fire Department, again, worked in adverse weather conditions to extricate a heavily entrapped victim. Due to the outstanding efforts of these members, the victim's life was saved. These actions exemplify the highest commitment and tradition of the fire service. Again, Battalion Chief Albert Carbone is not here. Firefighter Richard Curtis, who couldn't be here tonight, we wish a speedy recovery. The next unit accommodation for meritorious service, while operating on rescue box 911 on August 27th, 2011, during Hurricane Irene, members of the Warminster Fire Department, again, working in adverse conditions and floodwaters, rescued a stranded motorist from floodwaters. Due to the outstanding efforts of these members, the victim was safely removed from the floodwaters. These actions exemplify the highest commitment and tradition of the fire service. Deputy Chief Raymond Croke, Senior. Firefighter Dustin Fort. Captain Simpson, or Deputy Chief Simpson now? The next unit accommodation for meritorious service, while operating on tactical box 9327 on April 21st, 2013, at a dwelling fire, members of the Warminster Fire Department Engine Company 92 worked to extricate Captain Charles Simpson after he became trapped in a deck collapse during the extinguishing operations. The quick reaction and brave efforts of these members prevented serious injury to Captain Simpson. These actions exemplify the highest commitment and tradition of the fire service. Firefighter Dustin Fort. Thank you, Chief. Unit accommodation for meritorious service, while operating on rescue box in Wilder Grove on January 17th, 2014, members of the Warminster Fire Department worked in adverse weather conditions to extricate a heavily entrapped victim. Due to the outstanding efforts of the following members, the victim was extricated. These actions exemplify the highest commitment and tradition of the fire service. Deputy Chief Raymond Croke, Senior. He's not here, but Battalion Chief Stephen Young. Also Battalion Chief Albert Carbone, who's not here. Lieutenant Derek Croke, who's bowling for his father tonight. Unit accommodation for meritorious service, while operating on box 9256 on September 24th, 2016, members of the Fire Department Engine Company 92, while investigating a fire at Meadowwood condominiums, forced entry to a smoke-filled apartment, rescuing a victim still inside. Due to the outstanding efforts of these members, the victim's life was saved. These actions exemplify the highest commitment and tradition of the fire service. The last award tonight is accommodation for heroism. While operating on rescue box 922 on February 5th, 2011, Captain Charles Simpson of the Warminster Fire Department, worked in adverse weather, ah, mouth's getting dry, I don't know how you guys talk all night, worked in adverse weather conditions to extricate heavily entrapped victim without regard for his own safety. Captain Simpson remained with the victim while the car was returned from its side upright and onto its wheels. Due to the outstanding efforts of Captain Simpson, the victim's life was saved without further injury. These actions exemplify the highest commitment and tradition of the fire service. I'm done with my presentation, but I'd like to thank all the firefighters of the Warminster Fire Department for their continued support to the community. Without them, we, I have no idea where any of us would be today. And I personally like to thank Raymond "Pete," which I didn't know his name was Pete for like the first three years till I met Cindy and she informed me that Pete doesn't exist. But I would like to thank Deputy Chief Croke for all his years of service and all his help to me. It's been a, it's been a rough year, but we got through it. Thanks, Chief.
Thank you, guys. The reason these awards have been placed in our station over the years, so none of these dates are forgotten, if anybody wants to look at them, they're here.
Yeah, we're gonna take a brief recess, Chief, so if you want to leave those, the chief was saying that in the microphone, but these plaques will, will hang at the firehouse, anyone would like to take a look, and we're gonna take a brief recess if anyone would like to take some pictures, so.
Mr. Chair, it's okay for them to come up on the podium if they want?
Please do. Okay, the Board of Supervisors meeting is now reconvened. Want to thank the Warminster Fire Department again for joining us tonight, very special. The next up is land use matters and public hearings and ordinances. The first is consider adoption of ordinance 744, business privilege tax amendment. Mr. Bartle?
The, the ordinances before the board for, for its consideration, is there a motion to approve the ordinance as it is presented?
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Mr. Monroe, second?
Second.
Any further discussion from the board? Any from the public? Seeing none? We call the question, all in favor?
Do you just want to give a brief summary on what the...
Certainly, I, I will. I apologize, I didn't know that that was what I was being asked to, and, and, and I apologize for that. Yes, with respect to both A and B, the business privilege tax, which deals with services, and the mercantile tax, which deals with goods and wares and the like, the board in 2010 had changed the, the reporting year from a fiscal year basis, which would be July 1st to June 30th, to a calendar year basis, which would obviously begin on January 1st and end on December 31st. When they did that, they did not change the reporting requirements in, in the ordinance, and so the reporting requirements continued to be around September. The, the Berchheimer Group has asked that we make the reporting conform with what their practice has been, which has been April 15th of each of the years, and so what we're doing is conforming our ordinance to meet with that practice. It's essentially a cosmetic change in the ordinance, and that's true with respect to both of those matters.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion from the board? Any from the public? Seeing none, I call a question, all in favor?
Aye.
The chair votes aye, motion carries. Item B is consider the adoption of ordinance 745, mercantile tax amendment, which Mr. Bartle just covered, so I'm gonna go ahead and ask for a motion.
Motion.
Ms. Frescatore, a second?
A second.
Mr. McPhillips, any further discussion from the board? Any from the public? Seeing none, I call the question, all in favor?
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Next up is item C, authorization to advertise the rental housing ordinance. Mr. Bartle, you want to blow that?
Yes, there, let me just get to the, to the ordinance itself. We have a copy of that, it's, it's, it's been prepared.
And for the public certification, we had put forth an, an ordinance earlier in the year which just wasn't right for the board or the public, so we took a step back and reworked the ordinance, and this is what we've come up with.
Yeah, I think in, in paragraph three of the whereas clause, it says, whereas the board desires to repeal certain portions of the township's code relating to the licensing of multiple dwellings, dwelling units, rooming houses, rooming units, motels, hotels, apartments, multifamily dwellings, condominiums, duplexes, and other type units, in favor of the adoption of a comprehensive set of regulations to governing, to govern the licensing, inspection, and maintenance of residential properties in the township. And that's effectively what you're doing, and of course, your, your ordinance is rather specific to those things that are being repealed and those things that are being instituted.
And this, and this motion is strictly to advertise the...
This is strictly to advertise that, that ordinance has been prepared.
Public consumption, it says, is there a motion to advertise the rental housing ordinance? Mr. McPhillips, second?
Second.
Mr. Crowley, any further discussion from the board?
I'm glad that we did this on behalf of all the people that do run out here in the township, so I hope this works out for you.
And I believe we do have a, any comment from the public. I see Jamie's here from the Realtors Association, who was very helpful in us and, to us in recrafting this.
Thank you for your help.
Tell us who you are, if you would, please.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. My name's Jamie Ridge, and I'm president of the Suburban Realtors Alliance. I'm president of the Suburban Realtors Alliance. I'm here this evening on behalf of the Bucks County Association of Realtors, which we represent, to thank the supervisors and staff for the opportunity to provide input on the proposed rental ordinance. The current draft ordinance is a far better proposal for licensing and inspecting rental properties in the township than the earlier version floated late last year. The current draft strikes a good balance between ensuring that tenants have a safe place to call home and recognizing that the vast majority of landlords are law-abiding, small business owners who provide a safe—provide safe rental housing for their tenants and maintain their properties in a responsible manner. As president of an organization that monitors real estate-related regulations in the two hundred and thirty-eight municipalities surrounding Philadelphia, I've learned that the most important ingredient of a successful local rental ordinance is partnership. A strong partnership between municipalities that enforce their ordinances and the people who are subject to obeying them. The most successful outcomes occur in townships and boroughs that carry out their enforcement responsibilities with the same level of customer service and common sense that they would want to be treated with themselves. Townships that create undue burdens on law-abiding, small business owners soon find that those businesses—business owners don't want to remain in the community, and that kind of business—that kind of bad news travels fast. Of course, a partnership goes both ways. Those who choose to do business in a township have a responsibility to comply with the standards that have been put in place by the leaders of that community. We believe rental property owners who do not maintain their property in accordance with existing health and safety regulations should be held accountable to those standards. The ordinance you're discussing tonight would make that possible. So once again, thank you for your willingness to hear and address the concerns that we had with the previous draft ordinance. We look forward to working with the township moving forward to build on the mutually beneficial relationship that has begun with this process. And I want to personally thank Mark, Greg, Amanda, for bringing us into the process and letting us lend our expertise.
Thank you, Jamie. I think Savan Young deserves a little credit as well, that she came—was—she's a Warminster resident who came forward and said, "Hey, you guys need to take a step back. How about if we come in and we meet and we go over this and see what works for everyone?" And it was—I think we've come up with a great formula.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jamie. Thank you, Savan. We appreciate it. Is there any other public comment on the motion? Seeing none, I'm gonna go ahead and call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Thank you. Next up is public comment. Township residents have the opportunity at this time to comment on any non-agenda items subject to the five-minute guideline as recognized by the chair. Is there any public comment? Tell them. You have your number, too.
I just came with a big question. What has to be done, or what can be done in order to get the businesses on York Road—or Street Road, rather, back into Orchard, to shovel both Orchard Road and the last—
Ellen, can you move the microphone? Tilt that down a little. Apparently, they're not hearing you.
Is that better?
Yeah, that's better. Thank you.
The shovel—the last storm, CVS—okay, the only ones that shoveled the front on Street Road were Beneficial and Wawa.
Police and Fire Credit Union, you mean?
Not Beneficial, Police and Fire Credit Union, on the front. Nobody did the back. But you had people walking on Street Road in the shoulder of the road, along with the cars and trucks, who just maybe could get hit once or twice. Also, on Murns Road, CVS didn't shovel. And if you know there's three lanes coming out of Murns, one makes a right-hand turn, well, those cars had people walking in the road there, too, with the cars. It just doesn't go. Now, I think CVS has been solved, because I've been calling corporate. And I now have an email address, which I did give to Amanda. I have a person in contact. He has been very much back to me and very appalled at how this has been kept. So he told me it will be kept now. They got a new contractor in, and they did shovel, and they did shovel back on Orchard. And we're to notify if there's anything wrong. I'm to let him know. And he just called out of the blue yesterday and said to me, "Is everything still okay?" So I think he'll stay on top of it, because we sent them pictures, and we promised that grass won't get twenty-six inches again this year. So anyway, that's that. But the bank, Police and Fire Union, they didn't shovel at all. Even—I went in nicely and asked the Assistant Vice President if they could, and he said, "Oh, we have to get somebody out to do it, and I don't know who we could get." And I finally—I looked at it, and I said, "You know, you look young. He's younger than I will be there." And I said, "You know, I have a shovel. I'll give you the shovel. You can do it."
Good one.
That was the end. I got marched out. No, really. And he said, "Oh, I'm not gonna shovel." So then I thought of another thing, because last year when they put in the fence with Wawa, the bank, quote, "Didn't have any money to put up the bushes on the back." And so, I asked him, I said, "If you're making your budget for this year, could you put some shrubbery in, just like what Wawa has? It would look nice if you continued it, make the area look nice and neighborly." Well, he said he didn't know what could be done. And then I came up with the idea that I hear—I've never used it, but they have those GoFundMe pages. So I said, "Maybe we could GoFund—"
Maybe she could help us out.
I said, "Maybe we could put a GoFundMe for the bushes, because the bank can't afford them."
Bank doesn't have any money.
Right.
How'd that happen?
And he laughed at me, and I said, "You don't realize I could be serious with that, too." So anyway, that's all we're gonna ask is—and then Brando, Wawa, they were funny. They didn't shovel, and I went in there. I thought I'd be nice to each merchant and just ask, "Could they shovel?" Because there are kids from school and people walking on Orchard with the cars. And as a driver, with the snow being so deep and a little slick, I don't want to hit a kid walking or a woman that was pushing a stroller, holding one little one beside her. I mean, that's just not safe. So anyway, they were funny. And before I was out of the store, he's on the phone telling them within two hours it was done. But Wawa's been good, I gotta say that. They have done it all year. Then comes Brando. Well, he's in Florida, and he forgets to do anything. And they didn't shovel the front, and also Cleve Max. I went into them. Cleve Max did come out and shovel the back, but Brando's place and the bank are the two main—
Well, I'd spoken to Mr. Schuster after you and I spoke the other day about possibly the township crafting a letter to all those business owners to suggest that they get together and have one contractor do it, or some type of coordination.
I agree with you. I think—it's split the whole—
We can't force them to do it, but a suggestion from the township.
Well, we can certainly force them to shovel. That's part of the ordinance. That's a requirement that they have. But we can look at any way to help facilitate that.
We can't force them to hire one contractor, and that would make sense.
CVS always claimed they didn't own the part behind the fence, that the township does. Well, I know they don't because of the maps that we've had and the plans. So anyway, finally, the other day, Wayne said to me, "No, we do own it." So they've admitted to that. So now, I think we'll get done. But it's just every time—this whole year, they don't make any money. And then, Amanda, she had said that they were gonna find them, send somebody out to find them, because it was now—we're talking three days, four days after the storm.
Wow.
And then yesterday, when I was talking, she said, "Well, you gotta get in the ordinance, and then they have to have so many days to respond to it." And like thirty days? Hey, come on. Get real. Thirty days, the snow's gone. So then, if not, why don't all the Warminster Township residents do the same thing, which would be a disaster? So anyway, I think maybe—if it's thirty days, I think you gotta change it. They give them a warning, and if they don't shovel within twenty-four hours, they get another fine or something. If that's for snow—I mean, grass is thirty days, which by the time it gets done, the summer's gone, but—
We're gonna talk about that in the spring. I talked to you about that on the phone the other day.
Yeah. And then the other thing is, I know Brando's is for sale. And just don't forget, I know Mr. Schuster had told us that the fence would be extended when they made any changes at that place. They would extend the Wawa fence.
I don't remember—I can't make a commitment for other property. I remember ever saying—
Well, you said the township would, and we got other people. And I know Brian, the last meeting, said he remembered the thing about the fence.
I'm sure if land development comes to this board, they would be very insistent that it be extended, but—
When Wawa came in, the zoning board, in the zoning notes, it said to continue Wawa defense from Orchard, or rather, Murns, down to Wawa and the next property. Well, the next property at that time was owned by Brando all the way down to the church. But you, when we were going through, didn't want to push them to put in extra, because it costs extra money for Wawa, et cetera. That's what happened in our meetings. And the people that were there have heard you say that. So I don't want it all of a sudden, everybody to go, "Oh, we never heard that," because the residents on Mason all want to know, "What do they have to do to get it to look decent?" You ought to—maybe some of you should come and move there and live and look at it. And then you would see the trash and junk that you look at from your hands.
Well, as Mr. Schuster said, if they come in for a possible land development there, we would certainly insist that they extend that fence.
Yeah, well, that's all. We want to make sure that it will come up and not—like Mr. Schuster doesn't remember, but we remember, and we've got even some tapes from the Board of Supervisor meetings. I know one—was it DDRs or whatever they do, DVDs?
Oh, they're all up on YouTube. They're all up on YouTube.
Oh, that—well, I don't know about that. I don't do YouTube. I got better things to do than look at them. But anyway, the thing is—because some of that came in our private meetings when we were having the discussion of what to do. And that's when you didn't want to go any further.
No, I believe the legal advice that was given to us is that we can't—we couldn't force Wawa to extend a fence on other people's property. That was the issue.
Well, now, that was Mr. Savan, but Mr. Savan is another whole story, okay? Because he worked for Brando, and he worked for the township, representing both at the same time, which was definitely a conflict of interest, and we suffered it. Because when they took—we're given five feet, they took eight, and he wouldn't do anything.
We're digressing.
I'm not gonna—yeah, but I know, no. But this is how Brando—we were treated by the previous solicitor. So it wasn't fair and honest. And so, now, we've got to go forward, but you can't start saying, "Oh, I can't remember. It's not fair," because they made them go all the way from Murns up, to the CVS property, the bank property, and Wawa. So one more property wouldn't break them, and it would have looked nicer for the neighborhood. Anyway, that's all. I just want to see what can be done, and can something be done to make these businesses shovel, especially the two that just don't? Now, today, I'm glad you had a board meeting, because they went out and shoveled today. So somebody said something to them, but it's the afternoon it was being shoveled. And they had also branches across the sidewalks, and they just today finally moved them. And that's from the stormiest week. So I just think it's very poor for our neighborhood and for the township.
Mr. Monroe has suggested that the chief deputize you going forward when you go into the bank.
Oh, I just think something—if not—
No, I agree with you. So I do.
The businesses are just getting away, making it look sloppy. And a lot of people in the township want to know why, too.
So perhaps we can have a look again at that ordinance, and if it does indeed read snow removal within thirty days, that doesn't sound right to me either.
No, I actually have the ordinance right here. It talks about the snow removal within twenty-four hours after the snow has ceased to fall or the ice to form. And that's—that can be found at section twenty-one dash seven oh-two of your ordinances.
Frank, may I ask, do they get a warning and then a fine?
There is no warning provided for in this particular section. It's if you don't create a pathway of at least thirty-six inches in width along the entire length of the sidewalks fronting or budding said premises, within twenty-four hours after the snow has ceased to fall or the ice to form, that's a violation, and you can be fined for that.
Okay, but then that's when they—
Ellen, we can't. I'm sorry.
As a resident, I knew the twenty-four hours. We knew that part, but that they ignore. But it was like, if you give them a warning that they have not shoveled and they should shovel, then they—I was told yesterday, we're meant to believe that it would be thirty days for them to appeal that warning. That's what I'm talking about.
They have time because—to appeal the fine as well, and buys them more time, because in that ordinance, you have—it's the fine plus court cost, so everything gets—has to get filed, and therefore, they have unfortunately have a larger window than we would want them to have. But that's how the fine is written out in the ordinance.
Well, that's true, but of course, the fine is made upon the violation. The violation occurs if twenty-four hours goes by and they have not acted appropriately. It then gets—the citation gets filed with the district justice, with the district court. The district court then has a schedule, and they give people notice and opportunity to be heard, which is a hearing. And if the person—the person can either pay the fine, or they can ask for a hearing. And you're absolutely right, those things do happen. But nonetheless, the violation occurs upon twenty-four hours going by, not upon thirty days' notice.
Yeah, but what I was led from talking to Amanda yesterday, that they have thirty days to appeal the fine. So the question is, okay, it snowed on Monday, and we—I don't want to shovel. Or last week, I don't want to shovel. So you give me a fine. Now, I understood the fine was supposedly twenty-five dollars. I have no—I just heard that. True or not true, I don't know. If it is, what's twenty-five dollars? That's cheaper than getting somebody to shovel for you.
Okay, the first offense is to pay a fine of not less than twenty-five dollars nor more than a hundred dollars plus costs. And court costs can be significant. The second and subsequent offenses are to pay a fine of not less than one hundred dollars nor more than six hundred dollars plus costs, and in default, the payment of said fines to a term of imprisonment of not to exceed thirty days. Well, that doesn't happen.
But what would happen if they don't shovel, like this one just snubbed their nose again and didn't shovel for the week? Even though they were notified, they still didn't shovel. There's got to be something to make them either do it, or the township does it and charges them. I mean, I don't know what, but it's a sidewalk, and then you're putting people walking in the street. And the other day, we watched—there was a lady with a baby stroller and a little child in hand, and she went down the sidewalk and walked down, got to the bank, couldn't get through the snow. She had to turn around and walk all the way back to Orchard and Murns, go into the street, and then walk with them.
Yeah, Ellen, I think you're making good points. I'll tell you what. Let me sit with Frank and Amanda and talk about the ordinance, and if there's any changes or a way we can better enforce it.
Yeah, I just think there's something that's gotta be done.
Actually, all those provisions that you recommend are already contained in the ordinance. There's a provision already that says, "The township may authorize the removal of any accumulated snow and/or ice from the sidewalk where the same has not been removed by the owner or occupant within the time limit prescribed herein. Where such snow and/or ice is deemed to be a public safety hazard, or where its continued presence shall create a risk of injury to pedestrians seeking clear passage on the affected sidewalks." Then finally, it says, "The township may collect the cost of such removal, together with any charge authorized by law from said owner in manner available to the township for collection of obligations owed to the township." So I don't think—and I certainly could be educated on the matter further if there are other provisions that are in question. But from what I've read, I don't see anything in the ordinance that needs to be changed.
It just sounds like I gotta enforce it.
Well, and that's sometimes difficult. I think you probably know there was a great deal of enforcement in the last snowstorm.
Well, it's the businesses that I'm talking about, not residential as much, because I think they do their best to clear. Sometimes there's an elderly couple, and you gotta wait for somebody. I'm not talking that way. I'm talking the businesses, because those roads are the more heavily traveled roads. But the businesses don't like Orchard roadside of that fence to do. And I agree, get together and go as a group.
Frank, is there a provision in there that if the township does the work or has a contractor do the work, they're already contracted with contractors that does that during the snowstorm, that the cost is bared then to the property owner?
I'm sure that there is.
Other contractors have done that way.
Where—you want it done, and after a couple of days, so then other contractors will have Public Works do it, or a contractor do it that's already on call. That's taken care of. It's still—the process goes through, and that avoids the thirty days and playing a game, so.
Yeah, and that's a section that I read. The township has remedies here. Of course, you know, when you're in the middle of a snowstorm, sometimes it's sort of difficult. You have to establish your priorities, and you only have so much of a workforce. But as far as the remedies that are contained in the ordinance, it looks like the ordinance is in place properly. Now, you know, we could take a look at that, and I think Greg makes a good suggestion about getting together and seeing with he and I and Amanda, see what, if anything else, they may need in here. But to me, it looks pretty good at this point.
Now, like every one of the businesses had their parking lots done, shoveled into the stores so people could get in. But when they do that, they got to finish it. If they're able to get people out to do the front part, they have to be able to get the people to do the back part.
Sure.
And they have a school there, and you've got elementary school, kids walking, once again with cars.
Ellen, we agree.
Yeah, but I just want to see what could be done. The thirty days to wait was what kind of like—the flowers will be up and the words will be said.
We're gonna sit and discuss.
Thank you, Ellen. It's always good to see you. Is there any other public comment? Yes, please. I'm sure you will.
Hi, my name is Frank Pavlik. I've sent Mr. Schuster and the rest of you people a copy of my concerns. I have a couple of concerns. My first concern is that you scheduled this meeting during the Villanova game tonight.
Yeah, I know.
And I looked up the TV, and the game is not even on, so I—
It's forty-four, twenty-three at halftime, Villanova. It's forty-four, twenty-three at halftime, Villanova.
Don't tell me that.
Oh, sorry, she's taping it.
My other concern, as you also know, is the course of expenditures and revenues in the township. And specifically, I've, I've looked at things like the, the spending that we plan to do for Shenandoah Woods and for the Warmminster Community Park. And as you know, that's going to be a seven million dollar outlay, of which it seems like three-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand dollars expenditure is in this year, when we're forecasting a deficit of one point six million dollars. Mr. Schuster was kind enough to respond back to me, and he, he talked about the, the general fund deficit of one point six million, and I think that you said that currently the millage is eleven mils for that.
For the general fund is eleven point zero seven.
And you expect it would need to be for, for the, as a result of this deficit that we're running currently, what did you say?
Well, the current deficit is approximately one point six million. I believe, if you're going to look at a millage rate to solve that deficit, one mil is equal to approximately three hundred and twenty thousand dollars of revenue. So, divide one point six by three hundred and twenty thousand, that's the approximate millage for, for two thousand and eighteen, that would erase the deficit in the general fund.
So, that's about, it's like sixteen mils roughly then to cover that.
It'd probably be about five mil increase up to about there. Yeah, somewhere around there, yes.
Does that mean that everyone's township taxes would go up fifty percent at least? I mean, that's just the deficit this year. That doesn't include the, the ongoing deficit, because we have the additional maintenance costs and the debt service costs for the Shenandoah Woods expenses, outlays, and also for the Warmminster Community Park outlays. So, we're talking about a growing deficit, are we not? And this is my biggest, this is my concern.
Oh, you're, you're correct. It is going to be a growing deficit. However, a couple corrections, and a couple of points. First of all, let's talk about the general fund. That deficit actually has absolutely nothing to do with Shenandoah Woods or anything that's going on the park. There's a separate park fund that handles that, which also has its own deficit. So, just to solve the general fund deficit, budgetary deficit for two thousand and eighteen, you'd have to increase it by about five mils. Of course, there's a statutory cap on what we can increase as a second-class township. The cap is at fourteen mils, absent any court approval or referendum to go above that.
And you mentioned that.
On the Shenandoah, on the park side, there's two projects going on. One is Warmminster Community Park and the development that's going on there. The vast majority of that is grant-funded. So, although we have authorized up to seven million dollars to be issued in debt, a lot of that is going to be short-term financing. We're going to be taking that money, doing the, the improvements, and then receiving a lot of that back in grants, which will go ahead and pay off the debt. So, although it's, you know, it's a few million dollars, there is grant funding associated with that. On the Shenandoah Woods side, yeah, that's still an active discussion on, on there.
And there's possible remediation costs, too, relating to that area?
Yeah, there's a...
Which could be very expensive.
Well, I, I think when you look...
I mean, isn't it a toxic...
No. The, the issue, the primary issue in terms of environmental concerns is really the groundwater, which is no different than a lot of other places near the, the old naval base. There is PFO and PFOS in the groundwater. That's, that's undeniable. It's been tested for that. But as far as any other contaminants, there is, I believe, one localized area of construction debris. We have reports on this, but from an environmental standpoint, there's really no major concerns for us taking it. It's been gone through a finding of suitability of transfer from the Navy. We've had our own environmental engineer look at it. I know Mr. Hayes from the Environmental Advisory Council has also looked at it and, and, and saw that there was no major environmental issues there. And so, the remediation, the environmental remediation should be, if anything, relatively minor. The larger cost is going to be the taking of the infrastructure. There is a lot of old buildings there that need to be torn down, roads that would have to be taken out, water and sewer lines that have to be removed. So, that actually would be a lot more costly than any environmental issues from what we've, we've seen right now.
So, your estimate is that the seven million dollars will cover all those costs? Is that correct? Whenever I see remediation, it bothers, it's scary. Could, that could be, the sky is the limit, debt.
I believe the seven million dollars would cover everything, but again, we don't need seven million dollars. Half of that, or a proportion of that, is short-term financing for the Warmminster Community Park side.
And there will be debt, debt service costs for the seven million, though, right? You're saying it's covered by grant, but we're going to have to pay the interest on that?
That is correct, yes. Whether it's short-term or long-term, we're going to have to pay the principal, and so some of the principal we paid back on the grant side, some of the principal we have to pay back through taxation. And of course, whether it's short-term or long-term, there's interest involved in that.
My biggest concern is the bottom line, which is taxation of individual properties in Warmminster. Now, you're saying that we have roughly a fifty percent increase in millage for the general fund deficits. There's deficits in other funds also. What is this going to, what is the, your guesstimate of what is, this is going to be in terms of additional taxes per property on a percent basis?
I haven't come up with any calculations on that. Also, taxation is a policy decision that the board makes as part of the annual budgeting process.
I understand, but, but number, I mean, numbers add up. And so, if we're talking a fifty percent increase for millage just on one fund, okay, and we have ongoing additional costs because of these extra, the Shenandoah Woods and the Warmminster Community Park expenditures, that, that's my concern. I think we need to take a relook at and postpone some of those discretionary expenditures, rather than, because we're, we're looking at some significant possible tax increases for people. You know, if, if, if the tax increase on just one fund is fifty percent, okay, and we have other issues to deal with, as you showed in the budget, on other funds. You know, and, and the, my other concern was that, and I probably misjudged the response, but it seemed like we're treating this as business as usual. We, we talk about looking at ways to reduce waste in, in, in the Warmminster government itself. I mean, I know in my previous life, there is always waste to find, okay? There's no place that doesn't have waste, five, ten, fifteen, twenty, twenty-five percent waste even. So, I encourage you to take another look at that issue. And I know it's, it's going to be maybe a difficult medicine to swallow, but it's going to be more difficult medicine if these tax increases, okay, look like what they're going to be. The other issue is the selling of assets. Now, in the past meeting, and I'm sorry for taking your time, I just wanted to make one more comment. In the past meeting, we talked about the sale of Warmminster Municipal Authority, which turned out to be, created a lot of consternation, and ultimately, it was decided that we weren't going to take that approach. But sitting on Street Road is maybe a politically unpopular move, I don't know. But, but the Five Ponds Golf Club is, is a, a large area which, when sold, and can reap significant ongoing cash flow because of the income from residences, businesses, or even a private golf course. And it just doesn't seem like running a golf club fits in with an appropriate venture for a government, or even something that they could do efficiently. And what percentage, I estimated roughly three percent Warmminster residents actually use that golf club. So, why are we continuing to maintain that golf club? That it's valuable land, okay? Even if you argue that it's not valuable land, the ongoing tax that we would get from the residences and from the businesses that would be built there could be significant and could help offset this future pension issue that you're referring to, the pension explosion that, that might happen. I'm just concerned about business as usual, and, and Warmminster residents don't realize what's happening, and, and I just hope, and I'm sure you gentlemen do, and ladies do, know what's happening, but it really, it scares me right now.
Right. Do you want me to respond to that, or?
Oh, I, I have a suggestion. Later on in tonight's agenda, we are forming a budget committee, and...
Yeah, it's just that...
Be glad to have you serve on that. I would, very much so.
Yeah, I, my, my concern is that, as I said in my response, that it looks, that makes it look like we, as leaders of the township, are trying to avoid the tough decisions that need to be made in this area, by, by, by delegating it to somebody else, and then we point to them for, you know, that, oh, it's...
We're not, we're, we're not delegating anything. The Budget Committee is going to do an extensive study and make recommendations to this board, and we are going to make the decisions. They can't do that, we will.
Can, can, can an outside committee with little familiarity relative to, say, Mr. Schuster, do a detailed review of Warmminster operations?
We're looking for people with really high financial experience that would be able to maybe see something different than what we're looking at. So, it's going to be a totally independent committee that will answer to Mr. Schuster. He will then give the board the different options that we have, so...
Yeah, I mean, I've been an engineer all my life, and I've also dealt with very large projects and large government organ, I mean, private organizations. And it's basically addition and subtraction, you know? I mean, you, you...
You're right about that.
You, you, you have, you have, you have assets and you have liabilities. If, if one of the assets doesn't fit in with our charter, such as the golf course, and is a potential for generating significant ongoing cash flow...
Well, the golf course, I have to address that. Number one, we have zero employees over there. We don't, the entire course is outsourced, but hear me out, hear me out. We are generating revenue over there that is fueling our tax base. If that were to be solved for residential development, they would have to build more schools. And how would they build more schools? They would tax the residents.
Yes, but someone has to look at the number of additional schools versus the number of residents and the amount of taxation. Also, it could be businesses that could relocate there, or it could be a private golf course, for your place, that way.
Well, with the exception of that, I mean, there's other issues you have to be concerned with, too. I mean, you have to be concerned about stormwater management. I mean, it's called Five Ponds for a reason. Secondly, how many additional cars are going to be on the road? I mean, I, I can't tell you how many times I've heard complaints with respect to the traffic and all that kind of stuff. So, there's also a quality of life issue that is concerned there. So, I mean, that's not something that, I mean, I think it's like a less resort option for me. I, I, that's not something that I'd be very keen on.
I, I think it's something that has to be looked into, because I think the average Warmminster resident sees that, okay? And, and they see that there's relatively little usage by Warmminster taxpayers of that, of that. And it, it looks almost to somebody on the outside like a political boondoggle. I've been in this township for, for decades, more than four decades, and so I know the story, okay, of how it started, who was involved, okay? So, people are going to be aware of, of that whole story.
But I, I have to tell you, it is, it's on behalf of this board, it's not business as usual. We are all very, very concerned about our fiscal health. We are all aware of the upcoming problems, and we are all aware that we're going to have to make some real difficult decisions that are going to involve a few of us raising our hands when we really don't want to.
All right, well, I'm happy to hear that. I, I did resend the memo that I sent back on the twenty-first of January. I'd like a response from that, if I could ask for that.
I'll, I'll get one to you over the weekend. I did, I did read the chain.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Sure, Ken?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Just want to give you a quick update on the Fire Bill Advisory Council.
Identify yourself.
Oh, Ken Hayes, A50 Langau Drive. So, a couple of things. We went through our, we went through our EAC goals for the year for two thousand and eighteen, and a couple of things we're going to do. I'm not going to get into all of them. We're kind of develop, we're going to develop an educational series and present that at our meetings. Some of that includes native plannings and edibles. Donna Elms is coordinating with the Parks and Rec to partner with them in some of their, some of their functions. We're going to, we're going to partner with them, so I thank Donna for that. Amy Sanchez, Hamilton, or Hamilton Sanchez, I'm not quite sure how that goes, but anyway, she's also working with the school district to develop some plannings and, and some, handle some stormwater issues there, so I thank her. We have a community garden cleanup at Jemannic Park, I think it's pronounced, right? That's the Saturday, March thirty-first, so we...
The twenty-fourth?
All right, I stand corrected, the twenty-fourth. So, we have all our community gardens accounted for. People have signed up for those. We need some volunteers to help clean up that area and get it set up for, for some gardens. So, we're looking for some help there. The other thing I'd like to bring up is that we do have one open seat, and I, I think the EAC is starting to get some legs. We have some people showing up at our meetings. And we would like some, we would, we welcome any person that would want to join the board. Of course, they would have to go through, through you. So, we'd like to fill that seat if possible. And lastly, I, I hear a lot of things about Shenandoah Woods. So, one of the things that we did look at, as, as Mr. Schuster pointed out, is we, we looked at the remedial investigations and a couple other things. And we understand that the board is, excuse me, we understand the board is in the process of going through with the acquisition of that fifty-three acres. And the board voted, or the EAC voted unanimously for you to continue to do it. Our recommendation is that you continue to do that. There's, the benefits to the community far outweigh any of the other things we hear from other people. And that's a shortsighted approach, is to just sell things off for development, especially with the, with the stormwater issues and some of the loading into the, into the creeks and streams. That's an issue, especially in that area, in Southampton Creek. So, I would, I would, at the request of the board, and when convenient for, for you guys to put us on the schedule, I'd be more than happy to, to present the reasons why we've made this recommendation. That's all I have.
Thank you, Ken.
You're welcome.
It's okay, Mr. McKee, if I just interject, comment?
Sure.
Okay, we've been talking about Shenandoah Woods. A lot of folks have been asking questions. Is it prudent at this point, Mr. Barlow, to say we are still in negotiations with the Navy to try to make a better deal for, on behalf of our township?
I, I think that's, that's fair. I think it's fair to say that. We have, we've contacted the Navy. Our, our office has done that at the direction of the, of the board, and have, we are in the process of discussing alternatives and things of that nature so that the board can continue to make fully informed decisions. And all of that is part of the process. You're right.
Thank you very much. Just so our folks out there know that we are really trying to get a better deal for all of us. Thank you.
I just have one more thing.
Sure.
And I, I just want to, you know, initially, I, I, I'm a licensed geologist in Pennsylvania, so I looked at all of the data, all the remediation and investigation data for soils, and especially in Shenandoah Woods for Operable Unit Ten, which is the only area that would have impacts to soil. Now, the whole thing is groundwater, has groundwater issues, but that's been addressed. So, I, I just want to say that the record of decision by the EPA was no action. And we looked at all the data there, and okay, there's, there's a couple, you know, there's a little bit of soil weariness that were above standard for direct contact, easily addressed. So, this notion that this, this site is, is a hazardous waste site is a misconception, and it's out in the, in the, in the public domain right now, so it needs to be addressed. And that's why I'd like to do this presentation for you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Sure, come on up, please.
Sorry. My name's Mark Shafer. So, I just moved in to Warmminster about two years ago. The question I have is, so I'm in the Log College Worthington area, and didn't realize the traffic situation down there, and I didn't know if anything could be done about, so, between Valley Road and Bristol Road, I guess it's Sinclair, and then Log College. And Log College is basically like a drag strip, and I didn't know, because it's, we're at the point where we just cannot even sleep at night. There's, they're using the stop signs like, like starting lines down there. And I, and I think part of the problem is that it is in a valley, so everything echoes. So, I've talked to a few neighbors, and they, they agree with me that it's pretty bad. And I've talked, I've called the police a couple of times, and they're, they're like, well, okay, we'll send somebody down. I don't think anybody's been down there. And I talked to somebody, okay, so now there's a, there's a noise ordinance. I talked to somebody here on the phone about the noise ordinance. I'm not sure who I spoke with, but they said something... I'm not sure who I spoke with, but they said something about, "Well, see if you can get license plates or stuff like that, and we can give them tickets." I tried doing that once, but it actually got kind of confrontational with the one person that I tried to record the license plate from, so I don't want to do that anymore. So I'm not sure, is there anything that can be done in this section?
Well, we can certainly get some extra enforcement. Just to be clear, is the speed that your problem, or?
It's the speed, but it's also the...every single vehicle is like souped up with no muffler. I mean, I don't think people use mufflers anymore. It's unbelievable. It's younger folks with like little Toyota, you know what I mean? And then there's a motorcycle or two, which...
Are they passing through, or are they stopping and revving?
It's actually the stopping that's worse than the running the stop sign. If they just ran the stop sign, I'd be fine.
Be great.
Yeah. It's the stopping and going that's killing it.
Move stop sign.
If we could do that, that would be fantastic.
Well, I'll tell you what. I'll discuss with the police chief, who's back there listening to all of this, and we can get some extra enforcement out there and see what else that we can do. Obviously, if we don't catch them in the act, it's very difficult to solve that kind of a problem.
Can we discuss any options with our traffic engineer? Or anything that...
We can certainly do that.
Streets Department?
Yeah, I'm just not sure what we could do to solve that particular problem. If it's a speeding issue, we can get some enforcement out there. If it's...we already have everything we need on the books to enforce a noise issue. What we need is someone to call and, you know, and get someone out there to catch them in the act.
Right. And there is definitely speeding. Nobody sticks to the speed limit down there. The one issue, though, is like, somebody's going to work at 4:30 in the morning, and their car is just super loud, and they're coming by every couple nights. I don't know what they do, but at 4:30 in the morning, they're driving by. It's just, we can't even sleep in the corner bedrooms anymore. We're in the interior bedrooms because it's the only place that's quiet enough. Now, I looked at possibly replacing windows and stuff like that, and I mean, that's another option, spend $10,000, $20,000 on some new windows, but I don't know. It's just, you're right. But there's an ordinance, so if somebody...noise ordinance, so if somebody can measure the noise, and it's, what, it's 7:00 PM to 7:00 AM?
Yeah, it doesn't even have to be measured. If it's deemed a nuisance, or I forgot the standard, it doesn't have to be, you know, actually measured, but we can enforce that, absolutely.
Yeah. Like I say, if you come by at between 6:00 PM or 5:00 PM and 9:00 PM on a weekday, it's constant. You can definitely, in those hours, it's bad. It's like one after another, and then there's silence, and then it's like one after another. So I don't know. So I don't think they could because it's a double, two-lane road with a yellow stripe, and I think the fire engines have to get down the road, and I think there's reasons for not putting them because of fire.
We kind of steer clear of them township-wide because they're difficult for our plows as well, they damage our equipment.
Yeah.
We have terrible signs to tell you how fast you're going. Any of those?
Somebody did put one up on Worthington for a little while. I don't know if it slowed anybody down, but yes, so somebody else has requested.
I think your problem is that when they come to the stop sign, vroom, vroom, and then off they go.
Pretty much, yeah. And they're going.
We're going to have to take a look.
Yep, I'll definitely talk to the chief about this.
All right, thank you so much. If you want to leave your name, we can definitely get back to you.
Okay.
Is there any other public comment? Okay, so you're done, I'm going to move on to consent agenda. Mr. Schuster?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have a rather light consent agenda this evening. Item A is to consider approval of the Board of Supervisors' minutes dated February 15, 2018. Item B is release number one from the escrow of Home to Suites Hotel in the amount of $150,911.10, as recommended by the engineer. Item C, Hart School, release number 13 from escrow, in the amount of $21,568.51, as recommended by the engineer. Item D, consider resolution 2018-11 renaming the Municipal Complex Subcommittee to the Advisory Township Facility Subcommittee. This was mentioned at a previous meeting, and I've gotten comments that the name should be changed. It's not changing anything else with the committee other than the name. Item E is consider approval of the Township Manager Employment Agreement and Vehicle Selection as discussed in executive session. Item F is consider approval of Tax Assessment Appeal Settlement Agreement as discussed in executive session, as Mr. Bartle, I believe, talked a little bit earlier, as with Miller Boys Properties. There was a settlement reached as led by the Centennial School District for years 2010 through 2015, which would result in a slight reduction in the assessment and a total township refund for all the years of slightly under $7,500.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
Motion.
Mr. Monroe, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Crowley, is there any further discussion?
No.
Any from the public? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Next up is item six, finance report. Thank you, Schuster.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You have the February transfers in your package, as well as the supplemental bills list for February 28, 2018, in the amount of $1,012,433.67, and the bill list dated March 15, 2018, in the amount of $533,332.10.
Is there a motion? Mr. McPhillips, is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Monroe, any further discussion on the finance report from the board? Is there any from the public? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Next up is the February financial statement. Mr. Schuster?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Really nothing to report on the February financials. We're still early in the year. Things are tracking as expected. As the months go by, we'll be able to get you a little bit more information. Obviously, it's too early to talk about the real estate tax returns. I know tax collectors have been busy getting out all of those notices.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Schuster. There is no unfinished business tonight, so I'm going to move on to new business. Before we make these motions regarding the road program, do you want to give us an overview so we don't have to go through this individually?
Absolutely.
We have to do individual motions on each item, but if you want to give us a fast review, it'd be great.
Do you have the road names and everything, too?
I do. You guys asked.
Mr. Ketter, whoever. Yeah, I thought Mr. Ketter.
And I'll chime in.
Whoever. Right ahead.
Well, Mr. Chairman, two bids were prepared for the 2018 road program. One is for curb ramp installations, and one is for the milling. I think, as you all know, we do the paving in-house. The materials were done by a separate bid through a consortium, and I'll get to that in a little bit. The road program for this year is scheduled to 4.91 miles of roads, so just slightly under five miles. The roads, I can read...there's a bunch of them, I can read them off if you would like.
I think we're going to have Mr. Hines come in at some point and give a detailed review.
Absolutely. He's going to come either next month or the month after.
But these are available to the public, if anyone?
Absolutely. If any resident wants to contact...I believe we're also put out in a newsletter or a column that Mr. Hines wrote, but if anyone is curious about what roads are going to be touched on, feel free to contact the office. We'd be happy to let you know that information. So those were the two bids, and I'll start with item A. That is for the curb ramp installation, and the recommendation there is to go the lowest responsible bidder of associated paving contractors in the amount of $194,473.20. That is for the base bid and alternate one.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Ms. Freskettor, a second. Mr. Monroe, any further discussion from the board? Any from the public? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Item B?
Item B, along with the...continuing with the road program, is for the milling, and that would be to Bray Brothers, the lowest responsible bidder, in the amount of $193,209 for the base bid, alternates one and alternates three.
Is there a motion? Mr. McPhillips, a second?
Second.
Mr. Crowley, any discussion from the board? Any from the public? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Motion carries. Item C?
Mr. Chairman, items C and D were bid through the Bucks County Consortium. Item C is for the stone and materials bid. You have the five materials that are being awarded, the quantity and price. It is for them are being awarded to Eureka Stone Quarry, one to Hanson Aggregates.
Okay, is there a motion?
Motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion, Ms. Freskettor, a second. Mr. Monroe, any further discussion on the motion? From the board? Any from the public? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Item...you want to cover item D?
Yep, and item D, also bid through the Bucks County Consortium, is their municipal sign and post bid. That's being awarded to Garden State as the lowest responsible bidder. That's not associated with our road program. That's just materials that we use for everything. Some of the stuff that's through our road program will be replaced, but this is for everyday signage.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Mr. McPhillips, second by Ms. Freskettor. Any further discussion? The board, any from the public? Seeing none, motion carries. Whoops, I'm calling a motion. I'm sorry, all in favor? The chair votes aye. Sorry, I was already on to the next one, I apologize. Also, with the road program, the last few years, our crew has been really, really efficient at doing this, and we've gotten into supplementary supplemental paving. So they finish the road program, they've been doing works in our parks and et cetera at the golf course parking lot, and I expect that we'll have the same this year.
Yeah, there'll always be other projects. I know they're getting ready to tackle another project over at the golf course, and I don't know if it's paving, but as soon as they get done, there'll be other...there's always something to be done.
I mean, that's a huge turnaround in the road program. Thanks to Eric and the crew, the Public Works crew, really huge turnaround.
Absolutely.
Good news to them.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to echo the same thing. I actually have our estimates as well. You got some really good bids this year. We had estimated about $200,000 for your paving, and then also for the concrete work, $219, and both, as you see, came under that.
That's good.
And just one clarification, there will be some paving that is under the associated paving contract. Most of that's milling, but Norristown Road, and where people have been around for a while, this is part of the old Christhome Phase 1. There's a lot of repairs done out there, a lot of township public works out there, and that money is part of that that will be used to that, so.
It's the stretch beach right below Street Road?
Yes, from Street.
South Norristown.
Yeah, and right near May, I think it's pretty bad. So that...I got asked that question a few years ago, but that's part of this. Associated paving will take care of that. Township's not going to touch that. That way, we have a contractor working on it. It's some bad areas in there, but that'll close out finally that first phase of the Christhome development.
And just for the public, I mean, we get some phone calls, and we know if there's potholes that need to be addressed, please call the township. I mean, if we're not aware of one, we can't send a crew out to repair. So those at home, if you have a problem with one or you see one, please do let us know. Next up is item E, consider approval of resolution 2018-12 Budget Committee Formation. Mr. Schuster?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If you recall at the last meeting, Mr. Monroe brought up the concept of a budget committee. I was given the task to work with staff to come up with a appropriate resolution. It was drafted, it was sent out to the board a couple of weeks ago. I did not receive any feedback until today. There was a little bit of a minor change requested. So if the board is so inclined, I would ask for you to approve the resolution with the change that on the fourth to last paragraph, it would not be "The Board of Supervisors shall appoint one member of the committee as chair." It would say "The committee shall appoint one member of the committee as chair."
Okay, is there a motion?
A smooth.
Mr. McPhillips, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Monroe, any further discussion from the board?
The one thing I don't remember saying, did we indicate what kind of experience these members were to have?
No, that is not in there. I typically don't recommend putting in those kinds of qualifications because you don't know who's going to walk through the door, and you don't want to preclude anyone. Also, it's good to have a diversity on there. You know, if you put five accountants on here, it's going to be a bad committee. I mean, they could be great accountants, but they're just not going to agree with each other.
I agree. I mean, I know I had indicated that last month, but I just didn't remember if you'd put that in there or not.
So it's at your discretion who you apply.
That's fantastic. I was very happy...I mean, I was very happy with the way it was written, so.
Right. Also, okay, we have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Mr. Phillips?
When are we looking to appoint at the next meeting, or?
Yeah, as soon as you approve it, I'll go ahead and post this, and anyone that applies will be forwarded to you in the normal process, and hopefully you'll be making appointments at your next meeting.
Perfect.
Right.
Sounds good.
Great idea, Brian.
I mean, the only thing, some of the concerns I've gotten from people is their concerns that it will be a political entity, and I think that speaking to, you know, hearing some scuttlebutt from various board members, that I think that we pretty much agree that that will not happen, that that's the main reason why it's going to be created, and it's crucial that we prevent that from happening. So thank you for all your...your and your staff's hard work.
Thank you.
Is there any discussion from the public on this before we take action? Seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Look forward to seeing that committee formed. The next thing up is the DCED Early Intervention Program. I'm going to give that to Mr. Schuster for a little background.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This kind of ties in with what the citizen was talking about earlier, and I forwarded information on this program to you a couple of weeks ago. We did meet with a representative from DCED, two representatives actually, to talk about some of the resources that they have. One of the things that the programs they have is called the Early Intervention Program. This is a program which is open to any municipality. You don't have to be distressed or in any, you know, any form of imminent fiscal danger, but they encourage anyone that has certain concerns to get involved in this program and be proactive rather than reactive. I thought it would be something worthy of exploring, associated with the Budget Committee that you just formed. The Early Intervention Program essentially provides 50% of the funding to bring in an outside financial professional or financial outfit. They would look at your finances, they would look at your operations, they would look at everything and give their recommendations and their options on how to go ahead and proceed to make sure that you don't wind up in a very bad financial situation. If you authorize this this evening, we would go ahead and apply. It still doesn't bind you to anything. You're not committed to anything until you issue the RFP and select the appropriate vendor. DCED does have a list of authorized vendors for this program, so I think there's about 20 of them, so it'd be one of those. As for the cost, we'd have to wait for the bids to come back, but the number that DCED shared with us was approximately $80,000. And if they're picking up 50% of the cost, that would be about $40,000. So that's the gist on the Early Intervention Program, and again, I thought it would be a good resource to consider in conjunction with the Budget Committee.
Okay, is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Monroe, is there a second?
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
Freskettor, we can open it up, the discussion from the board. I know we were all notified with this, but we can certainly have some discussion on it.
So potentially looking at $40,000 for the township to pay for this?
Correct.
Half of?
Is that as high as, or?
I simply don't know. I mean, it seemed that the ballpark that they were seeing through the other programs that they run was about $80,000. Could it be a little higher? Could it be a little lower? Yes, we'd have to wait and see what the bids came back at. Yes, we'd have to wait and see what the bids came back at.
Now, even if we send this out to RFP, we don't necessarily have to engage.
We can have the bids come back, you can say, no, we don't want to do this program.
I mean, what if our budget committee solves the problem, wouldn't it be great? Wouldn't it?
It'd be fantastic.
Right?
Pressure.
I don't want to charge the residents more money, you know, if we don't need to do that.
I mean, I don't see anything wrong with authorizing advertisement, we don't have to, we don't have to engage.
I agree.
Well, the only thing I would say is that if you, if a majority of you do not want to spend any resources, let's just not go through the effort, you know, because at the end of the day, to engage this program, there would be some, some financial resources that are needed, but if the board's not inclined to do that, I would say, don't, don't waste the time.
Let me ask you this then, if, looking at our, our return, for the 40K that we would put out on, just assuming that 80 was the number?
Yes.
For 40K, what would be the value to the township in terms of, like, I know there's, no, I'm not going to use the word ROI or any of that, but what, what would be the value? Because, look, I like the idea of having people been through this, who deal with this all, all the time, advise us, that's great, at the same time, I'd have to, I'd want to be able to say, this is why their advice is worth this much.
Yes.
What would, from the perspective of a township manager, that's the only thing you can give us, is, what is the value of this company to the township in our current situation?
I think the value is, is more related to the Budget Committee.
Right.
You know, the board has said you want an outside entity to look at all options for the township, and look at our finances, and present solutions. I don't know who's going to be on that Budget Committee, you know, it could be five laypeople that just do not have any financial experience, or it could be some very astute individuals who do have that experience. It's important that they have the right resources to go ahead and, and complete that, so I see the value there. If there wasn't going to be a Budget Committee, maybe it'd be less valuable, but if you truly want an outside perspective, someone that has no ties to the township, you know, and is just going to be able to give you a fresh, clean opinion, this is a way of, of doing it.
Would they be working hand in hand with the Budget Committee, or separately?
I would say they'd be working with them.
Okay.
What I, what I imagine it is, Kathy, is similar to what Boucher does for us on Comp Plan.
Right.
Because a comprehensive plan subcommittee can exist without a planner, but with a planner helping us, the end product is superior to then what five non-professionals would produce.
Exactly, and, and what I'm concerned about potentially occurring is, if you have these five individuals, and they're going to rely on someone for guidance and for, you know, for financial advice, you know, the only people to rely on are the staff right now, and if that's what's going to happen, what's, you know, what's the point?
But you would, yeah.
Might as well just get my opinion, get the finance director's opinion.
You know, in my, in my opinion, and looking at some of the things that we've done in the past over a variety of different subjects, I mean, what we're asking this committee to do, and if we bring these professionals in for them to do hand in hand with the committee, is not to come up and solve our financial problems this year. We're talking about a plan that's going to take four, five, six, maybe even seven or more years than that, and, I mean, if it frees up the township from its financial burdens in the long run, I think it would be well worth it, I mean, we, we do every 10 years, we do a comprehensive plan study, we just hired a, a company to do that, I don't remember what the cost of that was, I think it was kind of in the, in the ballpark figure of that, I mean, that's kind of the same thinking, we do a comprehensive plan in, in the study to know where this township is going to go overall physically, and I think that's something that we need to really focus on economically as well.
Okay, would, would they prepare a separate report outside of the Budget Committee?
They would prepare one final report, I sent along with the communication two reports that they had done for other municipalities, they're fairly exhaustive, they go through all the finances and talk about the strengths, the weaknesses, the threats, they also talk about options that you can employ to go ahead and deal with some of these potential issues, so it's a fairly comprehensive report.
I agree with Mr. Monroe that if, if $40,000 and this committee can, can help solve some of our issues that we're facing down the road, I think it's worth it. Because in the long run, it's going to save the residents a whole lot of money if we can get, if we can get some solutions here. So I think it's a good idea to, to go ahead and look into them helping them out.
I think in the end, that they're, they, along with the Budget Committee are going to make the recommendations, we're the ones that are going to have to, in the end, make the decisions.
Yeah, with that being said, I mean, right now, I mean, we, we have the board of supervisors, in terms of crafting a budget for next year, we have the township manager, we have this new committee we just started, now we're going to add another layer to the tune of $40,000, I, I think we're moving backwards, not forwards. I'm okay with looking at proposals, but I'm not in favor of spending $40,000.
And I, I don't disagree with you, I'd like to put, myself, I'd like to get some proposals, I don't know if I'm necessarily going to raise my hand and spend $40,000 either, I don't disagree with you.
That's, I mean, yeah.
I mean, I wanted, like you said, I want to put people through the motion, but I think we should go for group proposals, at the very least, anyway.
Sure, yeah, I mean, I'll look at proposals.
And again, I mean, I, I think it's, it's a similar process that already exists within the township, I mean, you know, the Comprehensive Plan Board, you know, it's a separate board, you know, they, they went to professionals, right? You, you had two separate companies, I think, well, one was 30,000, and the other one was like, I don't know, 70,000, something to that nature, and you, you paid more into the higher company, the 70, whatever the reasons why you did that were, was I'm sure it's because you thought that it was, it was worth the investment, and I think it's something similar to what we're doing here, so I just, I don't, to me, it's apples and apples, I don't see the difference.
What about our finance director, like, what role does he play in this?
Well, the finance director, myself, and everyone else will be instrumental in providing, you know, data and information throughout this whole program, if we're, if we're involved in it.
I think what Mr. Phillips is questioning is, so what do we need them for?
Thank you. Well, I'll turn that back around and say, what do we need the Budget Committee for then, I mean, it's, it's really what?
It's a circular, yeah.
Yeah, it's really what this board wants, you're either going to say, we're comfortable with the assessment and the recommendation that is coming from the staff, or we'd like to take a fresh look. And there's pluses and minuses for both of them, we're not offended with a fresh look, and a fresh look is always appreciated, it can, you know, turn up things that we're not seeing, you know, but if you do want a fresh look, if that truly is your objective, well, then the Budget Committee paired with these financial resources can help achieve that objective. If you are totally comfortable with the staff doing it, and you want to hear what the staff has to say, then maybe you should reconsider the, the Budget Committee and what you want out of that.
I think we need to give the tool, the right tools to that committee if they're going to find answers. I mean, if this company's professional and it's going to save us money, I mean, we're going to be at 1.6, you keep adding that on, every single year, it gets bigger, bigger, bigger. If you have a company that you're saying is, that, that's exactly, that's their, their forte is to solving these kinds of issues, we can't leave that board out, out there to hang to dry without any professional, you know, experience to help them out, so if we do that, if we, we already voted to have the, the board assembled, we have to give them the tools to be able to do the job, that's all I'm saying.
I think at some point, we have to stop spending money.
I agree with that, too.
Let's, why don't we, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Why don't, why don't we take a step back and table this then, and get the Budget Committee appointed? And perhaps the Budget Committee, if they recommend that we bring them in, that we address that at that time? I mean, now, I already have a motion on the floor, do we need to?
The only concern, and I'm sorry, I don't know this off the top of my head, I believe there is a, is a deadline, I'm not 100% certain on that, I'd have to, I'd have to double check, I don't know what.
I mean, the last thing I do want to say, too, is I, I don't want, I mean, my whole purpose about making a recommendation for the Budget Committee was to make this board and its members as comfortable with making a major decision, you know, at some time in the future, so I, I want all five of us to be comfortable with it, so.
And that's another reason why I think we should table this, so we can have more discussion amongst ourselves, more discussion with the staff, why the Budget Committee's appointed, and you'll have to find out what the deadline is, I.
Yeah, sure.
All right, so are we not?
So we have a motion in a second already?
Yeah, I mean.
Is there, is your, is the will of the board to table the motion?
Yes.
Is that really what you want to do? Then a motion to table is in order if someone wants to make it. Yeah, I'll make the motion to table.
I'll second that.
Second, Ms. Freskettor, oh, any other discussion? Go ahead.
No, my, my, just out of curiosity, what is the cost to us roughly to, to advertise for the RFPs? I'm just curious, you know.
It's hundreds of, a hundred.
A couple hundred bucks?
Yeah, minimal, and you're not even, you're not even there yet, we would apply for the program, we would have conversations with D C E D, D C E D would help us, well, they have canned RFPs put together, so development's not going to take so long, then it would come to you for authorization for advertisement, like any other RFP, you know, and then it would be the cost of whatever it is the ad in the paper.
Yeah, I thought it was minimal, I just wanted to quantify it, that's all.
So, I mean, we could possibly revisit this as soon as next month, but I think, it appears to me that the board needs a little more time to digest this, and. So there's a, there's a motion in a second to table, is there any comment from the public?
No.
Come on up, Jack.
I can't get old, I can't, I can't hear things so well, good volume, but I, it's not distinct for me. And I stepped outside, so I missed half of this, so my only comment is, and I only come in on the rear end of the conversation, is that if you're talking about spending money for advice of, of, insane, absolutely, put it, forget it. We must have some responsible citizens, taxpayers, that would like to contribute a little of time to lend their expertise, to give an opinion, but it's certainly not worth getting involved in a whole production. And our, the town has been muddling along for, how many years is it now, a couple hundred?
Three hundred.
Three hundred, Jack.
So, our, our, our whole budget pickle has nothing to really to do with day-to-day operations, and you can, you know, one department there, no, our whole budget pickle is to define benefit pensions. That's the thing to be attacked, and one township can't do it, I've said this before, one state can't do it, it's a countrywide, everybody has to get together, start with the state, work your way out, talk to one another. There, I'm told that it's, it requires, there is a defined, there is a, it's built into the Constitution. The state, our legislators build it in, that they're indemnified, that they can't, they can't just say, well, we want to end it. The solution, which has happened in private sector, is that whatever, whatever defined benefit employees have up to cash value up to that date, that's converted. Yes, we have now, the new law, so-called, oh, they're all praising it, that all new hires go on defined contribution. That doesn't solve the problem, because that leaves, that leaves a Ponzi scheme to keep the defined benefit pensions going. So, that's the problem, that's what has to be addressed. And, and one township, Little Ole Warminster can't solve it, Little Buck County can't solve it. You all have to get together, every municipality and every county, and, and beat up on our legislators, because they don't want to change it, they're the ones that made it, they're the ones that put us in this pickle. I don't know that it's necess, well, it definitely is not Bernie, he's not been around that long, I don't know how our, our other friend is, is doing, Senator Greenleaf, but if, if he was on it, but the point is, our legislators are in it, and they all, they all want to perpetuate it. So they're the ones you have to go after, and the only way you can have an effect with them is not just you contacting Bernie O'Neil and Stuart Greenleaf, no. You have to present the case to, to get enough public drumbeat, so the public goes and beats up on the reader. That's what it takes. Thank you.
Thank you, Jimmy.
Thank you, Jack.
Any other comments from the public? Okay, there's a motion to table in a second, I'm going to call the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes, chair votes aye. Motion carries, next up, professionals report, Township Manager, Mr. Schuster.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, you have my written report in case there's any questions, a few things to, to highlight. One, I just want to thank everyone who's been involved in the multiple storm responses, police, public works, fire department, ambulance, I'm missing a few, but a lot of, a lot of people were out there doing a lot of work to make sure that the township recovered from these storms. Pico, they've been.
Municipal authority.
Municipal authority.
They have power, but my water won't.
Yeah, so there's a lot, and I also want to thank the residents, I know that some people went through a good stretch without power, thank them for being patient while Pico went and, and did the very best they could to restore power as quickly as possible, thanks to everyone that complied with the snow emergencies and kept their cars off the road, it greatly aids the Public Works Crew in making sure the, the roads are, are cleared. So I do want to thank everyone for that. Next, I see a lot of comments out there lately about streetlights, people want them in their neighborhoods, they have questions about them, you know, I, I just want to say that streetlights, the way they work, you know, in.
I agree with Jack, finally.
I agree with Mr. Diamond, I don't need them.
I'm just saying, the way they work is, there are districts that are created, and they are paid for by the property owners in that district. If any group, if any neighborhood is interested, they most certainly can contact me, and we can have a discussion, but that is not something that the township just goes ahead and puts in streetlights and is included as part of your tax bill, it is a separate and distinct charge, so we can always have the conversation about streetlights if any neighborhood is interested. And last thing, and this was touched on earlier, is potholes. I'm told by our Public Works Director that this is one of the worst pothole seasons that Pennsylvania has ever seen, we have been impacted quite a bit here in Warminster, when you see them, please report them, I know our Public Works Crew is out there filling them as quickly as possible. With the temperatures as low as they are, they obviously can't put the, the correct patch on there, have to wait till things warm up, I think around, you know, constant 50 degrees or, or so to go ahead and make a, a permanent fix, so, that is my report.
Okay, anyone have anything for Mr. Schuster?
I just want to say that they did a great job, actually, at Barness and Laverre, the, the water authorities is doing work on, on Barness, so that's been, because of the nature of the work, that's been like a, you know, they're testing missiles, and then on, on Laverre, of course, on the township side, I think it was on the township side, you know, the same thing with all the potholes, it was, it's been a complete mess, but somebody went through under the water, so he took care of Barness and, and, but that's all the temporary stuff, right? They just fill that in.
Too cold to make a permanent fix right now, as soon as it warms up, they'll be back out.
Yeah, no, they're doing their best, it seems like everyone understands, you know, it's just a lot of driving like this.
We had a big dip on Centennial Road, and before I even got a chance to call, it was already patched, so you guys are doing a great job. Thank you to you and your staff.
Excellent, Solicitors Report, Mr. Bartle.
Yes, thank you, the board has a receipt of my written report, there are nine items that were, that were mentioned in there. One of them I do have an update on to, to make known to the, to the public, which we discussed in executive session, and that is the 138 York Road, the Gallagher matter. We wrote this report before that matter was resolved last evening. Last evening, there was a zoning hearing board application that was withdrawn by, by the applicant before our local zoning hearing board, as a result, there was an agreement that the second floor residential use was an illegal tenancy, that the tenant would be out in two weeks, that the kitchen appliances would be out as well within that period, and that there would be no water or sewer to the second floor within that two, two week period, excuse me. Also, the $1,000 fine that was doing, and owing to the township through the Order of the Court of Common Pleas was paid as well before the hearing, in addition to that, in the event that these things are not done within two weeks, we have a court order with the remedies to allow us to do them immediately. That's all I have.
Thanks, Frank.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bartle, Engineers Report, Mr. Kenner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, we touched on the road program, the other, the only other township project we're working on is, in fact, there was a meeting today, Karen McNair from my office met with Township staff to go over the, the community park projects, Mr. Schuster already alluded to, or mentioned several times, the grants, so we'll be, I think Karen promised submitting that, those plans next week, and going through that process for approval, so, and I believe Mr. Schuster scheduled, I think, bi-weekly meetings, just to keep up to date, we're getting at the finish line there.
He's never going to go out for bid.
What? Yeah, so anyway, Karen's been working out with the staff, and again, we're, we're finally there for submission. The only other update you have for my report, actually, it was updated the last second, was 1270 Murns Road, that's the Dauser Farm Project Subdivision, they're scheduled for the March 27 Planning Commission meeting, I'm sure that will be a healthy discussion there on that project, so, you know, and I know Amanda, Karen will be there, Judy, Traffic Engineer, so we'll have all the staff there, we'll see how that goes, and whether or not you see that in April, or, you know, they have to go and make some changes, but we are working at review, everybody's working very hard on getting that review out, so they have ample time to address our comments. Outside that, the only other, it's not a new business, but a reopened business, Burger King is making burgers again, right, as of this afternoon.
Is that right? Looking real good, too.
And, and how I know that is, we had to verify, and Amanda works with our staff every day, and we were trying to make sure that the, the new wall was up in the back there, the noise wall, actually, it's a fence, not a wall, that was a condition that had to be done before they, they opened up, so that was done today. So Burger King renovations are up, I haven't seen it yet, but I heard it was packed.
Yeah, we love it.
So, not a new business, but a reopened business to Warminster.
You have to give us the list of updates now, you know, Steak 'n Shake?
Oh, Steak 'n Shake, actually, yeah, see, I want to keep saying it, we're getting closer, but we're done on our end, Township, it's up to them to get started, I really think he got in over his head a little bit on the financial end, how to sort through all that, so he's probably looking at changes that he has to make, probably with the building, whatever, I don't know where he's going to, you know, he might have some budget issues, too, but he, he did have some, some, some concerns there, so I promised the staff, we would really try to, in fact, Amanda and I talked, we'll minimize our involvement, there's not too many issues there, it's very limited, I mean, you know, we have the school projects that are being developed, there's residents completely around, so, as you know, they come in for the most part every meeting, the other, the other projects, there's very limited, only a few residents that are impacted, so if we just focus on those and let them do their. if we just focus on those and let them do their thing, it's private property, they just need to follow the plans, and we're fine. So we've agreed to reduce and help them out. I don't have any other updates on waste, or it's been quiet again. It went through like a thirty-day period where everybody got quiet again.
No sign, no confirmation, not going to put a coming soon sign?
No, no.
I have one for you, because I got asked this a couple of times this past week, Rosemore Donuts. That's completely silent, isn't it? Or have you heard something?
We spoke with the property owners, I guess, that, of the Rosemore Shopping Center, because during an EDC meeting, had got brought up that it was messy again, so we reached out to them, and they're still trying to figure out what to do with them in general as well, because they don't like that, how it looks, and that it's just run down, and then the issue with the money and everything else related to it. So it's really got no update, but they are trying internally to get, do something with it.
It's a shame the business never got open.
We've leaned that property, right?
Yes.
And, no, it's all over Facebook, they're talking about the new Aldi that's being brought in over there in Warrington. That's not affecting our Aldi, as far as we know.
We haven't had, yeah, I've heard, seen those comments, too. I haven't seen any indication that it's not a new one, rather than us, ours moving, so that's my understanding.
Well, we, most people in Warminster, we avoid street roads, so they won't be going to the Warrington one if we have one in Warminster. It's true.
Okay, no one else has anything else from Mr. Kenner? Township Manager, announcement of upcoming agenda items. Mr. Schuster.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If there's no objection, I'd like to cancel the April 5th meeting.
No objection.
Yeah, as Mr. Kenner has discussed, Doucher's Farm may be on your agenda, depending how things go with the Planning Commission. Also anticipate the Finance Director being here with a number of financial policies he'd like for you to consider for adoption and review. Hopefully, you'll be in a position to make appointments to the Budget Committee, which you just formed this evening. The rental housing ordinance will be on the agenda for your adoption. And lastly, the Chief will be making a presentation just for you to go ahead and consider. We haven't done a lot of work on this, but we do qualify for red light cameras, and the Chief has done some preliminary research, and I'd just like for you to take that in and get a little direction from the board to see if, in fact, you're interested in pursuing red light cameras. This would be a traffic calming initiative. It really is not a revenue generator. It is at first, but there is things that, there are expenses that increase along with that. So he'll be here making that presentation, and if the board is so inclined, you can give a thumbs up to proceed, or thumbs down to stop. Before we do any heavy lifting, want to make sure we took the temperature of the board.
Two tickets today.
That is all for the next agenda.
I just wanted to mention the Comprehensive Plan Subcommittee, that date's been changed, correct, Mr. Crowley?
It has. What date are we on now?
April 30th.
April 30th. I didn't want to say the wrong date out loud.
I didn't either.
So, yes, we passed the buck all the way down to Amanda.
Thank you.
Next up is public comment, our second round of public comment. Sure, come on up, Jack.
Just read on the drum that I've been beating on. Don't spend money that you don't have to. It is not a requirement that the municipality provide recreation. It's a nicety, if you can afford it. When we're confronted with what we're confronted with, with the pensions, not spending money on recreation, where we get grant, if it's a matching thing, fine, it's one thing, but we shouldn't go looking for stuff, and where we spent money, we have more properties than, in my opinion, are white elephants. The four hundred thousand, whatever it was, for the old swimming pool and stuff like that, it's insanity, in my opinion. You may agree, you may think it's wonderful. Now, there've been some pros and cons here tonight. You know my opinion, Shenandoah Woods, walk away from it. Absolutely, we should not, to go spend money in the first place and then pick up the liability for it forevermore, wind up where they're speculated, three million, five million, it's insanity. Let the government keep it, whatever they do with it, they're welcome to it. We don't need the liability, we don't need the expense. That's my two cents for it.
Thank you, Jack. Any other public comment? Sure.
Bob Wilson. Like to thank Mr. Monroe for coming up with a Budget Committee. I'd like to be considered for the Committee, however, you know, officially, but I think personally, it's a step in the right direction, because we were all at the last, you know, couple of meetings. Everybody knows what happens. I think this would be, this is a good start, so everybody can be on the same page, so that's why I'd like to be considered. Thank you.
And I think Mr. Schuster will be advertising that, so.
Okay, thank you.
You could send an email, you don't have to write a letter.
Yeah, you don't need a hard copy letter, you can email Township Manager. Any other public comment? Seeing that, I'll go to Supervisor's Comments, Ms. Frescatore.
Yes, first, I'd like to congratulate all our men in blue. They've been doing a phenomenal job, from the police with the parade and all the firemen's accommodations, all our emergency crews, our road crews, everything they did with the snow removal. I saw Warminster municipal trucks all over the Township, I'm like, yes. So they did a phenomenal job. As far as the rental agreement, I would like to say thank you to Mr. Bartles. He's only been here a short time, but he's certainly up to speed, and he's been really helping us out with cementing some issues that we've been having some issues with. I want to thank him for that. I'd like to also, like to thank Mr. Kennerd. I think it's very noble that you're going to work for Gilda's House at no expense to them. I don't know if a lot of our residents realize, but that, they have an Underground Railroad in the kitchen that you can see, and that was one of the stops for the Underground Railroad, and it's a piece of history that we have here in Warminster. And for you to do that, you know, for that house, I think that's amazing, so I want to thank you for that.
And we have a few other things that you might want to consider working on pro bono.
And I'm glad that we're talking about Mr. Bartles negotiating with Shenandoah Woods with Mr. Schuster. I know that you're trying to do a great deal for the Township, so I'm really happy about that. And that's, that's all I have, all I've got, I just want to say thank you to all of my colleagues and professionals, because I think we're on the right road to trying to solve some of the issues that we're facing in the Township. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Frescatore. Mr. Monroe.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to reiterate some of Ms. Frescatore's comments with respect to the, all the emergency responders and all, everyone that goes out there, you know, during, you know, when we're all sitting at home, nice and warm and cozy, and the roads are shut down, and, you know, these people go out there, because there's been a lot of negative comments with respect to the enforcement because of the snow, the snowstorm. You know, I said it on Facebook, and I'm going to say it again, that all of these people need to be commended. And, you know, and a lot of them, I'm not sure about the Fire Department, but like, again, I consider the Police Department to be understaffed. You know, financially, we can't really do anything about that right now, but they are understaffed, and we shouldn't forget that. You know, that these people are responsible for thirty thousand and more, you know, the safety and well-being of thirty thousand or more people, and I just commend them again. Thank you.
Mr. Phillips.
At the risk of sounding redundant, I want to thank Public Works, the Water Authority, and the Police Department for the job well done during this last snowstorm, and want to wish everyone a Happy St. Patrick's Day.
Mr. Crowley.
All right, well, you know, with Gilmore, if they want to donate, they can sponsor the DECD Early Intervention Program. Think about it. For as much as we're going to mention the Budget Committee, we'll just name it the Gilmore Budget Committee.
Whispered over about loaning our chief financial officer to the Township.
There we go. Gilmore's been successful, let's do it. But I tried to look up the deadlines for DECD, early intervention, and the state being what it is, I can't even come close to finding the dates online. So, but that's for another day, I'm sure we'll revisit that soon. Yeah, thank you to WMA. I know a couple of people had broken pipes, they're out there, and that, thank you to the cops and Public Works. I don't often say this, because a couple of years ago, I really gave them a hard time, but thank you to PICO and all those people who came from all over the country to help and get the power back up. I know some areas were out longer than us, but Warminster, within three days, I think we were down to like, 2% out.
We were recovered fairly quickly, yes.
So I want to thank those men and women who were out there in that storm. And then the last thing, you know, I live over in the Speedway, so our plows are going through there, and they were doing a good job, but this was a pretty heavy, wet snow this time. And when the plows go through, unless you do that thing where you shovel out that ten-foot part in front of your driveway, you get your driveway plowed back in. Well, in the Speedway, this particular winter season, there's been a resident, who I'm not going to name, because I know this resident doesn't do it for the, for the kudos, but who goes through the entire Speedway and plows out everybody's driveways. All day and all night. And the other thing is, I mean, he works for us. So he's just another example of the public service that our employees give. They, not only on the clock, but off the clock. I mean, there's a lot of homes in the Speedway. To go do that and spend, I can only imagine, be four, five, six hours doing it is a big deal, and, you know, to that person, I tip my hat and thank you, but I don't want to put him on out there, because he's not doing it for that reason, so, thank you.
Hey, I want to just dovetail on that, I want to thank all of our employees and police and emergency responders. You know, a lot of people don't realize, when you're home, trying to take care of your house and making sure things are good at your house, these guys aren't with their families, they're out doing for the residents, so it would be, really to be commended, and you have to keep that in mind, that these guys aren't home taking care of their own homes. I also want to wish everyone a very happy Patty's Day this weekend, and a very happy Easter and Passover, which is coming up in a couple of weeks as well. And I want to apologize to my neighbors.